I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is June 24th, 7:02. This is Village Board Meeting number 3,054. Clerk, please call the roll.
Evernathy?
Kim?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Very good. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is applied to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. First thing on the agenda tonight is approval of the minutes. Exhibit one is from the Village Board Meeting, June 10th.
So moved. Second?
Motion by Voss, second by Kim. Any discussion?
There's a couple of corrections to make. Mr. Jack Forshow came with a statue and he did say he wanted it in front of the Village Hall, but later after the meeting, he clarified in front of the Police Department because it was...
But if he said in front of the Village Hall, he didn't want it in front of you.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
All right. Never mind then. And...
Page?
If I can find the page. No, I think...
Which page?
The one with Mr. Forshow?
No, the next one.
I'm not finding it. Okay. It's, uh, page 80. During the talk about the grassy areas, I asked if pets were allowed and they said no. This says pets, dogs, and cats will be allowed.
Correct. They said they would be allowed.
Oh, they did afterwards?
Yeah. During the meeting, she, Maria, turned someone in the audience and they checked and they said they would be allowed.
Oh, okay.
Does anybody else agree?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any additions or corrections, but I'd like to compliment the clerk on this Herculean task of assembling the minutes as completely as you have. I think we can do away with the television if we have a text like this because it not only represents what was done at the meeting, but it represents what everyone said. It's a complete text of thoughts. And you realize that's not required of you. But nevertheless, while your energy is kept up, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I've had advice and help and input in my first couple. I've had a lot of questions, but everyone's been very helpful.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
Yeah, I have to get all that down now for the next...
Oh, yeah. Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Present.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Very good. Motion passes. Minutes are approved. Next, the minutes for the committee of the whole meeting from June 10th, 2013, exhibit two.
So moved. Second?
Motion by Voss, second by Kim. Any discussion? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Present.
Very good. Motion passes. Very good. Next on the agenda is the time for public commentary. Does anyone wish to approach the microphone and make a public comment? Nope? Okay. Are we sure?
Go Hawks!
All right. Very good. The floor is closed. We move on to presentations and awards. There's none tonight. Next, we have a public hearing, fiscal year ending 2014 appropriation ordinance public hearing. This is exhibit three in the packets. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Trustee Sullivan, who will administer this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, is the mayor... Oh, we have a...
Oh, excuse me there.
...from the public hearing.
We have a... Next page, just a second. We have a... Okay. So we have a script here that we'll follow. And the first, so we don't have to adjourn the board meeting, we just open the meeting, this hearing up. Recede and reconvene. Very good. Okay. So, we need a motion to recess the Village Board Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meyer. Second by Semple. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Very good. So we have recessed. Now we need a motion to recon... No. Now a motion to open the public, the appropriation ordinance public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Meyer?
Second.
Second by Semple. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. The ordinance public hearing is open. Now we have to take roll. Clerk, please take the roll.
Kim?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Very good. So now we can call the meeting to order. The purpose of this hearing is to review and receive public comment on the proposed appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year ending April 30th, 2014. Trustee Sullivan, do you want to take it from here?
Now I can take it. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a public hearing in which the public is invited to respond to an ordinance drafted that outlines the maximum amount of expenditures that can be made by the village in different categories. The appropriations are for corporate $32 million, for special projects $42.7 million, water and sewer projects $21.4 million, totaling $96.1 million. Anyone familiar with our budget realizes that that's a lot more than what has been budgeted. But unfortunately, if we are to respond to any type of unaccountable eventuality in making expenditures, we need to be covered by this amount of appropriation. With that explanation, there is another public hearing that is a much more significant hearing in regard to expenditures, and that is our levy hearing. The levy is actually a dollar amount that we collect from real estate taxes. And we collect that amount through the nickel. Not having a lot of people appear, or really having no one appear at that hearing, it's not likely we have anyone tonight. However, if there is someone who would wish to rise and come forward, give your name and address, ask a question, or make a statement in regard to this appropriation ordinance, now is the time. So I invite anyone to come forward to do those things, all or none. Anyone interested in making a statement in regard to this ordinance? Are there any board members who wish to have something to say regarding the appropriations ordinance? $96.1 million. That's not unusual.
Could you just... We all know that the appropriations is way in excess of the budget, but I didn't hear you say the budget amount. It might be helpful if people understood.
I believe the budget amount was somewhere in the area of $37 million.
Our actual budget?
Plus special...
So total budget is?
Corporate operating expenditures?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven something? And what's our corporate operating budget minus?
Twenty-three.
Twenty...
Twenty-three.
Okay. And what was the total amount that you mentioned?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven? All right. There's a lot of room between 57 and 23. All right. You want to know where the room is?
Well, I mean, that has to do with budget. I just wanted...
I think the important thing is that...
The appropriation is way more than the budget and we tend to stick with the budget and not the appropriation.
Yes, absolutely. And when we talk about $57 million, we are... You know, it's a misnomer. We're not appropriating. We're approving the expenditure of $96.1 million. Now, where we would get that amount if it were needed is something else to discuss. And many municipalities don't function with an appropriation method of approving spending. There is a process called the Budget Officer that I think is a lot more convenient, just as legal. And it makes more sense because it doesn't force us to come up with this number, which is hugely excessive. Nevertheless, this is what we do and we've done it as long as I've been here. Perhaps it will be something that's... It has caused a problem, but it does involve a lot of red tape. And so if there are no questions from either members of the public, from board, then I move that this hearing be closed.
Second?
And suggest a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Voss. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Very good. The public hearing is adjourned. Now we need a motion to reconvene the Village Board Meeting.
A motion?
Motion by Kim?
Second.
Second by Meyer. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Very good. The Village Board Meeting is now reconvened. Clerk, please take the roll.
Kim?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Okay. So we have reconvened the Village Board Meeting. Next on our agenda is the mayor's report. Three items here. First, before we go to the motion regarding the prevailing rate of wages, I'm going to ask our attorney, Mr. Moreno, to give us an introduction to this topic.
Yeah, take the mic there. They want to... Following the last meeting, I had an opportunity to review the prevailing wage act. A question came up at the meeting as to what were the consequences of not passing the prevailing wage ordinance in June as required by the act. While the act also requires that a certified copy of that ordinance be filed with the Department of Labor and the Secretary of State's office no later than July 15th of each year. And if that is not filed, the act also provides then that the village cannot let any public improvement contracts without the prevailing wage language in bidding documents and contracts is provided in the ordinance. Now, the city of Highland Park some years ago took the position that because they were a home rule community, that the prevailing wage act did not apply. And so they went ahead and advertised for this and led a contract for some work on their water system without passing the prevailing wage ordinance or including prevailing wage language in the documents in the contract. And the Department of Labor, through the Attorney General, sued the city of Highland Park for injunction. The case went all the way to the Illinois Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court held that yes, indeed, this was a matter of statewide concern more than local concern. So even though there was not a provision with respect to home rule communities, then the prevailing wage act, nonetheless, it applied to them. And they were required to pay out the prevailing wage on that contract, even though the work had already been done by the time the case reached the Superior Court. Now, in addition to the injunction, the act also provides that if a contractor is not notified of the prevailing wage in this contract, and he is then sued by employees for the prevailing wage, there's a difference between the prevailing wage and whatever we pay them, that any penalties or fines or interest that he's liable for, he's liable for an injunction, that failed to include in his contract. So there is not only the problem with injunction, there's also the problem of paying fines and penalties and other interests. Lastly, there is a provision that has been referred to, which was referred to in the Highland Park case. I don't see any case where it actually was pursued. But in any event, Section 6 of the act says, "Any officer, agent, or representative of any public body who willfully violates or willfully fails to comply with any of the provisions of this act is guilty of a Class A misdemeanor." So I don't think it's likely that that sort of proceeding would be brought, but I wouldn't want to be the first one to test that. So there are certain consequences to failing to pass the prevailing wage act ordinance. Then I think the other question was whether or not this was being put on the agenda and to not, after received the 3-3 vote that they have passed at the last meeting. And looking at the Illinois Institute for Continuing Legal Education, these are volumes that most municipal attorneys follow, checking the law. It does provide that a council may reconsider its votes and actions on questions before it and rescind its previous action, subject to certain exceptions. And one of the exceptions is if it's presented at a special meeting of the board, there must be at least as many trustees present at that special meeting as were present at the meeting in which it was postponed. Another exception is if the rights of third parties have been in need of intervening. For example, if the board approves a contract and the contractor either starts to work or mobilizes to work, well, then he's committed and the Village Board could not rescind that approval after that. Another exception is where there is a public hearing necessary on the grounds of, such as the plan, which is zoning or variation matters, the board could not go back and rescind whatever action it took without a new public hearing. In any event, none of the exceptions is obviously applied here. And so the mayor does have the authority to put the matter back on the agenda as it is tonight. The mayor failed to do it when the trustees actually moved to the vote. And so it's not only the mayor who voted, the board who voted. So I think it is appropriate to consider and vote on this matter again.
Thank you very much. So I need a motion to pass an ordinance of the village of Munnaline Lake County, Illinois, asserting the prevailing rate of wages for laborers, workmen, and mechanics employed on public works of said village, exhibit four in your package.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Meyer. Any discussion?
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor. I just want to commend Trustee Sullivan for making a stand every year about Springfield and unfunded mandates and how much it costs this village and other communities. And, you know, understand his sentiment that we don't like it. And I totally support that. However, that being said, I'm not willing to risk this community, the projects that we have, and possible state funding, to make a political statement that I think is best made by lobbying in Springfield. So while I absolutely agree that it's ridiculous that we have to do this every year, I'm not willing to vote no and risk the programs that we have and the employment that we have going on in our community. I am willing to continue to talk to my legislators in Springfield to ask them to stop putting this burden on us.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I might ask, Mr. Moreno, when was the Department of Labor versus Highland Park? What was the year that that took? Eighty-eight? Twenty-five years ago. I would say to you that the likelihood of, considering the political climate in Springfield right now, the likelihood of reversing the prevailing wage travesty in this state probably is just nil. It's not even slim. This country was founded in the minds of people who weren't going to take it in regard to taxation and the direction of an honorless government. And what's the risk here? Not our necks? Not the Tea Party people? The real Tea Party people in Boston? A Class A misdemeanor? Send the message? Light a fire? You know, our press... I have a gentleman here from the press. I don't think his publication has spent a lot of time chasing around nickel and dime things, getting people to resign from office because they've done some nickel and dime thing, like give a certificate to McDonald's for somebody that registered to vote, some other silly thing. And yet we spend billions of dollars every year in the municipalities in this state, more than we need to spend because of this prevailing wage travesty. And you're going to sit here and take it? Well, I'm not. Send me to jail. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Trustee Sullivan. Anyone else?
Go again. I just want to say, you know, Trustee Sullivan, it's not... I'd be happy to send you to jail. That's not the issue. The issue is that we have... We're working really hard on getting our streets done and working very hard on getting our Village Hall done, and those projects would be stopped. And think of where our community would be then. So you can take this righteous attitude because you know that the rest of us are going to carry on with what needs to be done. Again, I applaud the attitude. I do not applaud the sentiment of putting our community at risk.
I disagree entirely that there's any risk involved here. There's a light at the end of the tunnel that we could switch on. There are communities just waiting for somebody, just waiting for the train to leave, to get rid of this prevailing wage travesty. It's utterly ridiculous. The law, Davis Bacon Law, this is where it came from. Came from the federal government during the Depression. Herbert Hoover was president and signed it. At that time, it said every project, $2,000 or more, had to pay a computed prevailing wage. It was meant to put a floor under wages during the Depression. Now, these wages are jacked up. You ought to see the list, what people are paid per hour, plus overtime, plus benefits, plus training. Make your eyes bleed. Now, we have... We're attempting to put a ceiling on wages, and it goes higher and higher and higher. And it's not an honest estimate of what wages should be. It inflates... We've heard from our own staff and we've heard from private contractors that doing business with government in the state of Illinois costs at least 25 percent, if not 50 percent more, than in private industry. And those dollars aren't paid with a pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. They're paid with your tax dollars. And, Trustee Voss, you're concerned about what we can do. Why would we jeopardize the projects we've got? Why can't we light a fire in hopes of doing twice as much someday? And really, you talk about a jobs program. If every municipality in the state of Illinois could do 25 percent more, think of the jobs that would create.
After you got done...
We have a problem in this state, and it's not coming to an end until we just simply sit down and not stand for it anymore. And I was thrilled. We had two trustees join me last time. I thought, wow. Fortunately, Trustee Evernathy is not here tonight. Don't be afraid of this. You'll have a lot of help. Might cause a little pain for a while. Got to start somewhere, though. But don't worry printing anything because newspapers don't print that sort of thing anymore. We got to make our own news, folks. You stick with the nickel and dime stuff, Mr. Tell that to your editors. That's all. Enough on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Sullivan. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Meyer?
Well, I recognize that it is probably difficult to overturn it, but efforts of organizations like the Lake County Municipal League Legislative Committee, which I'm on and help represent and fight some of these issues, they're successful in managing to provide their support to chip away at some of the provisions of this and get some things changed. Recently, some of those were related to landscaping. While granted only a small part, if you do take it in smaller chunks, you can address it in trying to right some of the injustices that are in this act.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Upon advice of legal counsel and in front of a room full of law enforcement officials, I'm going to vote to not break the rules and I'll support this ordinance.
Good. Anyone else?
I was just going to talk about the Lake County Municipal League, and Meyer already said it, so...
Okay. Okay. I guess my comments would be I would vote in favor of this motion. I certainly appreciate the attitude from Trustee Sullivan, though, in terms of the notion of civil disobedience, which has a very strong tradition in our country. And with civil disobedience, though, the consequences must always be kept in mind and endured cheerfully by those who conduct civil disobedience. And I think what we're hearing is that really the consequences of this are a bit more than what I think we should probably contemplate right now, given what we have going on. But I certainly understand where you're coming from, Trustee. So with that, I will ask for the clerk to please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
No.
Yes.
Kim?
No.
Oh, I would vote yes. Motion passes. And that takes us to the next two items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Board. As we've been doing for the last few weeks and at the last board meeting, I introduced Deputy Chief Hanson to you as being newly promoted. And tonight, I'd like to bring forward Fred Cleora, who has been selected to fill the commander's position. Fred and his wife and daughter are here tonight. And as we have done in the past, I'd like him to come up, take his oath, have his wife pin on his badge for him. But first, let me tell you a little bit about Fred. Fred's been with the department for 19 years. He is, has prior experience with the Lake County Sheriff's Office and has also served in the military. During Fred's career here, many of his services have revolved around his ability to speak Spanish. And he did extensive portion of his career down at the White Hall, apartment buildings, now Park Butterfield. He's also formerly the Mundaline High School Resource Officer. And for the last five years, Fred has been a patrol sergeant on the street. He has had a wonderful career, and he's done a lot of things. He knows a lot about our department, and I really think he's going to be able to help take us into the next, next five, 10 years here at the department and move forward. So Fred, if you'd come up, Mary, go ahead, up, take your oath. You go ahead.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Frederico Cleora, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the officer, office of commander, according to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
And next, the vacancy created by Commander Cleora leaves us with a vacant sergeant's spot. And Dan Gorski was the next on the list for the sergeant's promotion. He has been with the department since 1998, about 15 years. He has served in the capacity as FTO, Field Training Officer, Use of Force Instructor, Accident Reconstructionist, and most recently, he's the coordinator of our Special Olympics Promotions. And Dan also has had a wonderful view of the department from many different levels and somebody who I know has excellent knowledge and will fill the spot very wonderfully. So Dan is here with his wife Polly and his three daughters. I'd ask that you come up.
States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of sergeant, according to the best of my ability.
Thanks again. And that's probably going to be the last that we do that for a while, so. But congratulations to both of you gentlemen. It's well deserved. Thanks.
Chief Gunther.
Thank you very much, Chief Gunther. We want to address a little bit the process for getting the sign ordinance finished. Many of us have been in interviews here recently over the last few weeks. And the way we're going to do this is we're going to have a committee of the whole meeting. Our target date is on July 22. We might move it to the first, just before the first meeting in August. I think that's the seventh. But what I wanted just to bring up with you, with everyone, is the, just ask you to please start doing a little research on your own before then, because at that, or just before that committee of the whole meeting, you will be given a technical report in advance. And in that report will be various topics that we're going to discuss at the committee of the whole meeting. Particularly, we're just going to need to have all the trustees' input on various topics so that then they can go back and compose the ordinance in accordance with, in a, in a direction that would, it would get approved. Okay? Now, we don't have the topics yet. I imagine that a lot of it will be, some of it will be on electronic signs and signs occupied in windows and sizes. So between now and then, if you could just give it some thought, do your own research before that, that would be great. All right? Okay, moving on to trustee reports. Public Works Committee, Trustee Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution waiving the formal competitive bidding process, accepting a proposal from EJ Equipment, Inc. of Manchino, Illinois, via Atlantic Machinery, Inc., and approving the purchase order for a sewer televising truck in the amount of $204,779. And that would be your Exhibit PW-1.
Second the motion.
Motion by Meyer, second by Semple. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Sullivan.
The equipment that we have to televise our infrastructure underground now is on a trailer?
Yes.
And why do we need to put it on a truck now?
Cost difference wasn't that great between the two. And then also, the need for a truck is the accessibility. Right now, it provides us with better accessibility to get it on a chassis rather than on a trailer for, for obvious apparent reasons when you're going off-road with it in certain situations.
I mean, we would have the same equipment, but now it's on a, it's on a truck, self-propelled vehicle compared to a trailer, and the price would be the same or similar?
Price is comparable. It's about $25,000 difference.
You know, I, I know, I read the, the background on this. Seems like it is pretty much the same capability, the same length of extension, same graphic or capabilities. Or it's the same unit, pretty much the same capabilities that we've had in this unit that's past its prime?
It has a few-
The only difference is it's on a truck. It's on a self-propelled.
It has that, but it also has the capability to tie into our GIS software system now.
Okay.
The existing system does not have that capability. We will be able to link the televising reports directly to the pipes and structures shown in the GIS.
All right. Okay. Then that's a significant difference, but it's not the percentage of the cost. I was thinking that the unit on a trailer might be half the cost of this.
No. No, we can provide you with that.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, please.
Okay. Trustee Voss.
I know that you got this, you know, that you're asking us to waive the bidding because this is purchased through a, a national purchase program. Do you have any idea what the cost would be if we didn't do it through a purchase program?
I don't. No, we don't have that information. We haven't tried to procure pricing outside of that National Joint Purchasing Alliance. What we can do is, is talk to the vendor, but my guess is the vendor would say it's the same price regardless at this stage, because he's, it's the only vendor that would provide us with this particular piece of equipment. So it wouldn't be a, the fact that we are a member of the NJPA at this point provides us with that capability, but even if we weren't, he'd probably offer us the same price because we have done that in the past with other such services like crack filling and pavement marking. We weren't members of a joint purchase cooperative at the time, but they still offered us the same pricing that the joint purchasing co-op received for those same services, because they were doing the same work in the same area.
Okay. And the other question I have is, is this a, a piece of equipment that we ever loan out?
We have in the past. Not necessarily loan out, but provide assistance to other communities with our staff manning the vehicle.
And do we recoup anything from that?
Other than the possibility and the opportunity to receive reciprocal service from them in the form of either an aerial lift truck or additional manpower when we need it, we do not. More of a mutual aid situation.
Do other surrounding communities have a similar piece of equipment?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all.
Okay, anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Anything else? Appreciate.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Meyer. Finance Committee, Trustee Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have two motions. The first is a motion to pass the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year ending April 30th, 2014. You'll see that in Exhibit Finance Number One. I'll make the motion that we approve this appropriation ordinance.
Motion by Sullivan?
Second.
Second by Meyer. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
And the mayor votes on this.
Yes.
Second motion is one which we no doubt will have an abstention. That is one, a motion to approve payments to AT&amp;T invoices totaling $1,807.17, and I'll ISO move.
Motion by Sullivan?
Second.
Second by Voss. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Abstain.
Very good. Motion passes.
This evening, on our omnibus list of motions for approval, is one to pay a bill list in the amount of $1,270,645.39. Some of the larger items in that are an amount to Weston Solutions for a design of the new village hall. This is $207,888.17. Also, an amount to Weston for the construction, ongoing, in regard to the village hall. This in the amount of $590,784.74. A third significant payment is to Mancuri Construction. This is for the Holly Street infrastructure improvements. This in the amount of $90,639. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Sullivan. Next would be the Public Safety Committee, Trustee Semple.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Sashko, I'd like to turn it over to you for updates. And we do need a meeting call, Mr. Mayor, and since you didn't officially call a meeting for the second meeting in July, call it.
I think that's okay, because actually, I think our first opportunity for a committee of the whole meeting for the signs would be first meeting in August.
Chief, how much time are we going to need?
Probably an hour.
We'll have a meeting call over 6:00 PM, the second meeting in July.
In July.
And what are the topics we're going to cover, Chief?
We're going to do a thorough review of the ISO rating that we recently received and an overview of how that plays in the long-term planning for the department.
It'll be on July 27th, is that the date?
22nd. 22nd.
22nd.
And what time would that?
6:00.
That's a 6 o'clock, 6 o'clock meeting.
That's for the fire, the fire portion of the Public Safety Committee.
Okay.
Chief Sashko, any updates for us?
The only other update would be, again, that we have our blood drive coming up here on the Fourth of July weekend, on July 6th, from 9 until 3. This is our largest drive of the year. There's actually a barbecue that goes on here as a part of that that's sponsored by Life Source. And we're really hoping to break 100 units at this drive. We did 127 last year, so we would encourage the board to help us out with getting the message out to the community. A lot of our propaganda went out today, and we'll be doing our email blast through Diana O'Kelly and a few other people. So McHenry just had a wonderful drive this past weekend of 147, so we will have a target we need to beat them. So that's it, sir.
I could talk about the pancake breakfast between now and the next board meeting?
Oh, yeah. Well, the pancake breakfast is on Sunday morning. That's in the, in the community day's schedule that came out. I know the Village Newsletter just came out, the Mail, in the last couple of days. So come out Sunday morning at 8 o'clock, and it's always a great event. We usually have about 1,200 people that show up for that, so thank you.
Fantastic. Chief Gunther, anything for police? Friday?
Friday, we have a graduation of our junior police academy, 25 Carl Sandberg students at 11 and 13. We'll be graduating from that on Friday. I believe it's at 11:00 AM at the police department. That's it, sir.
And Chief, you and your staff will be serving as greeters at the festivities?
Be there and for us, yes, sir.
Fantastic. Just so everybody knows, there's a little change around the Fourth of July, the layout for the activities, that we don't have the property formerly owned by U.S. Music to overflow the carnival onto. So when you walk up and are greeted by our Mundaline's finest, you'll realize that things are a little more compressed. I believe Portland's, excuse me, Crystal Street is going to be used, the carnival itself. And because of the limitation on space, we have, there's going to be a couple less rides this year at the carnival, too. So it's not due to economic reasons other than the economic reason of the property owner having some difficulties where we can't secure the approval at this point, unless something changes between now and then. Just so everybody knows, it's going to be a bit different from what we're used to. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Trustee Semple. Next, Community and Economic Development Committee, Trustee Voss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few announcements. First of all, Trustee Kim and I did go to Party Fantasy last week and tested out their go-karts, which rode just fine.
Yep.
And they have let me know that they plan on opening on Wednesday of this And they have let me know that they plan on opening on Wednesday of this week to the public, weather permitting. And also, as a reminder, it is Mondeleine Community Days coming up. And as trustee Semple said, the carnival will be slightly different this year. Also different will be the pet parade, still starting at 9 o'clock, but starting down by Cracklauer Park instead of up at Abernathy Park. And also that this Sunday starts our free concert in the park series. It's a great time for people to come out and have a little dinner in the park and listen to some really great music. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next, trustee Kim, Communication and Marketing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm just calling a meeting, so I'd like to call a Communications and Marketing Committee meeting for 6 o'clock on July 8th. And we're gonna have a presentation by BDI on the community branding project. This will be open to the public, and it will be across the hall in the, is it the training room? Yeah, in the training room. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Abernathy is absent this evening, and she chairs the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. Now, the vice chair is trustee Sullivan, and we do have a motion this evening, so if you would kindly do the honors.
No, I'd be more than happy. The motion before our committee, in our, in our committee is one to approve an agreement for professional services with HR Green for the design and permitting of Phase 2 of the CV drainage way, in the not-to-exceed amount of $194,670. And to authorize village engineer's signature on the agreement. You have that in your CNI exhibit number one.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Semple. Any discussion?
Just briefly. Did we, we didn't bid this? Did HR Green do the first half? Okay.
Yes, they did.
They weren't HR Green.
They were whoever. The other thing is just as informational to the rest of the board, I have received some phone calls from residents who have seen, either in the paper or had heard that we were moving along, and they just called to express their support of us actually moving along and doing something about the CV to help stop their flooding problems.
Thank you. Anyone else?
What are we gonna do when we spend $5 million and it doesn't solve their flooding problem?
Well, really I'm hoping that we don't spend $5 million.
Me, too.
And let's see what the engineers have before we start arguing about it.
Oh, I'm just asking a question.
Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
No.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries. Any other items there? Don't think so. Nope.
Believe that's it.
Okay. Very good. Other reports, any other trustees have? Any other reports? Okay, let's go to the scheduled business. Omnibus voting items. Any items A through G that a trustee wishes to pull?
G.
G. By trustee Voss. Anyone else?
Can I make a general comment on a template? Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. Alright, so I need a motion then to pass omnibus items A through F.
No, second.
Motion by Semple, second by Voss. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, wait a minute.
This is when you were gonna discuss it.
Oh, hey, alright. Just the general template that we use for, let's see here, for the encumbrance purchase request. It says Department Authorization Without an R, and so do the typo-corrected going forward, because this is for every purchase request.
Okay. Got that? Typo on all the purchase requests that we need to just take care of. Okay? Very good. Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Voss, item G.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this off because there's an item on the bill pay list that I have asked for some information for, from staff, and I'm not sure that I've received all of the necessary information for me to make a decision about this, so I pulled it off so that I could abstain from voting on it.
What is the item?
It is an item to do with Mondeleine Community Days.
Is it $15,000 for fireworks?
Nope.
Oh, good, okay. Alright.
So if somebody else would like to make this motion?
Motion by Semple?
I'll second.
Second by Kim. Any discussion?
But I might wanna know, too, if I knew what it was. Something got by, something got by me, is that it?
Or you didn't have a problem with it, you know, we've talked about before that-
Perhaps, but how will I know?
Well, because I assume you read the bill pay list, your finance chair. Did you find a problem?
None that I can recall, but-
Okay, so then we'll let it go with that.
Sometimes I need help in recalling things.
I'd be happy to discuss it with you later.
Alright, thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Moving on to village staff reports. Mr. Libado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have four items that are on the agenda and one item that's not on the agenda. So I'll just start at the top and work my way down. The first item is the, I'm looking for a motion to authorize bare lens to sign intergovernmental agreement with the Park District, Mondeleine Park District regarding the multi-use path that would connect Grand Dominion and their golf course, which now escapes me-
People Chase.
People Chase, thank you, down the Vista Drive. There's various maintenance responsibilities, and essentially there is an agreement between the homeowners association and the Mondeleine Park District, and that agreement provides that the maintenance responsibility for the path on private property but within an easement is to be maintained by the homeowners association. Anything outside of that in the right-of-way is maintained by the Park District. And then in the right-of-way of Holly Street, the pavement markings on the pavement of Holly Street is maintained by the, by Lake Dot, and anything outside of the pavement on Holly Street is maintained by the Park District. And the village's responsibility for maintenance are for the two signals, flashing lights, if you will, at either side, the north and south side of Holly Street. And that's essentially what our intergovernmental agreement states between the Park District and Mondeleine. So if there's any questions on that, otherwise I'd be looking for it.
So moved.
Motion by Voss?
I'll second that.
Second by Sullivan. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and the next three items all relate to, in some way, work going on out near the village hall subdivision or work in the village hall subdivision. And so the first one is a motion authorizing the village administrator to execute ComEd customer work agreement and a purchase order in the amount of $55,084. And this one is for electric service within the village hall subdivision. So this work, the $55,000, as Mr. Flynn has pointed out in the staff report, is broken into kind of two components. We're gonna do a small part of it initially, which essentially provides electric service in the subdivision to the village hall building, and, and then to Lot 5, what we're calling Lot 5, which doesn't mean anything to anybody, but essentially runs the electric service almost to the midpoint on the southeast corner of the subdivision. And so that's what this would do, the motion authorizing to execute this, is for that work. And, and the budget, I should add that the budgeted amount for that work is $110,000.
Very good. So we need a motion in this regard.
So moved.
Motion by Meyer?
Second.
Second by Kim. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item is a motion to authorize village administrator to execute another ComEd. This is agreement, this is the rider DE distribution system extension, and this is also approved purchase order and payment to Commo Edison for $85,341.83. And this agreement then brings the electric service to the subdivision. So we had originally planned for this to be $275,000, but that is a cost of $85,000 to do that. So this is the work, if you recall, that started on the east side of the railroad tracks and came across the tracks, up to the substation, and now the second part of that is being extended north on Archer Street to a point where it'll enter the subdivision. So that work is $85,000. So I'll be looking for a motion on that.
Yep.
So moved.
Motion by Meyer. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Kim. Any discussion?
I'd just like to add one more thing to that, and again, this is something that will be rebated back to the village as the usage moves about, throughout the years, maximum of 10 years. If we haven't used enough electricity to get this rebated back to us, then we just lose. But the last estimates I've seen is that this money should be rebate, rebated back to us, probably in that, maybe that seven to eight year timeframe. So it's kind of an advance payment, so we don't walk away, and then they rebate it back.
Very good. Any other discussion?
Is that why it states the village hall electric use is not included, because it is free?
Correct.
Just so I can remember correctly, did we change electric carriers recently?
Not for this type of work, it was for small businesses and residential.
Okay.
And that was for the purchase of electricity, not the distribution of electricity. ComEd still distributes the electricity.
Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries.
Okay, and the second to last item is a motion to approve purchase order and payment to Commo Edison for the Archer Street pole relocation, amount of $180,000. This one is a little bit more complicated, but I'll start with the end result. And the end result is, there was an overcharge for what I refer to as the Phase 1 electric line relocation. This is the one that was moved off of the Sigma property and rerouted around the village hall subdivision, and for the reasons stated in the summary of the staff report. But the end result is, is that the customers, Commo Edison customers and Mondeleine, will see a $260,000 credit back on their electric bill. And along with that, if you remember, there were high estimates on what it would cost to relocate the pole line from the east side of Archer to the west side, and we were able to, with the help of Mr. Flynn, able to negotiate down that cost. It was rather complicated, but without getting into that, we were able to negotiate that down to $180,000 for that work, and some of the original estimates were as high as $550,000. So that's helpful on this project. And then just as, you know, some of the things that we looked at on this was the relocation. You know, first of all, it's almost cost prohibitive to bury these types of wires, in part because these are the big ones, the 34 KV. And if you remember from the last discussion, this pole line carries the power that goes out to Wakanda. So the 34 KV line leaves that substation on Division, goes north on Archer, west on Hammond, meanders through the residential neighborhood a little bit, and pops out on the Holly Street, and then proceeds west to Wakanda. So these are big, big lines. And, and so the reason for the relocation from the east side to the west side is because of our future plans for streetscape improvements as part of the village hall subdivision. If you recall, there's a plan to provide some parallel parking on the east side of Archer, on the east side of Archer in the future, which is planned for next year, and as well as streetscape improvements, which are the typical brick favors and decorative light poles, so on and so forth. And so all of Archer is getting redone, the street will be completely redone in the next fiscal year. So all of this came into play when we looked at what we needed to do and, and how we would best set this up so that we don't have conflicts in the future. And then when it's all said and done, you go out there now, and it, it looks absolutely terrible, and I know that the residents have been very patient out there, but when it's all said and done, there will be only one set of poles on the west side of Archer, whereas today there are two sets of poles on Archer. But when it's all said and done, there'll be one that will carry both the 34 KV line and also the 12-volt KV line. 12-volt KV line is what provided service to, like, the residential stuff and local, 34 KV is more the transmission line. So that's, that's a lot, but, so at the end, we're looking for a motion to approve a purchase order and payment to Commo Edison for $180,000. And then the, upon notification to Commo Edison, it's my understanding then that this credit back to the customers will occur on one bill, not spread out over a period of months. And depending on when we notify them, it will happen in the next available bill cycle. So we're expecting this might happen as early as July, but it seems like no later than August, that there should be a credit.
Good.
So moved.
Motion by Meyer.
I'll second.
Second by Kim. Any discussion?
I just want to verify, since most of our customers have transferred to relation now for synergy, will, will they still get this credit? Yes? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
In second line, after the word estimated, it should say "by" instead of "but."
Okay, it's okay.
Okay. Alright. Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries.
Okay, one last item that's not on the agenda. This is also a Commo Edison-related matter, and this was something that was of urgency, and so I went ahead and authorized the work to be done, but I was too late in getting this on the agenda. The amount is $16,000, and this is for- The amount is $16,000, and this is for, now that we're moving the poles to the west side of Archer, we have to reconnect two transformers or light controllers on the metro parking lot, otherwise, we won't have lights. And so when the poles get moved to the left, to the west, and they just turn off the poles on the east, we won't have power, so this is to bring the power from its existing location to the west side of Archer to reconnect these light controllers, for lack of a better word. That cost estimate is $16,000, and I bring that to the attention of the board only because we were forced to make this decision. We have no choice in the matter, and, but it was too late to be placed on the agenda, and so we went forward with it. This will come back to the board on the next board meeting for formal action to approve a purchase order and payment, I think it'll be to Weston Solutions. We were able to use some of their subcontractors or electricians to get this work done. And that is a negotiated price that we were able to get. So that work is going to happen immediately and will, in all likelihood, be done before the next board meeting. So I'm just really kind of advising the board, letting them know this had to happen that way, and bring it back to the board for formal action.
Okay.
And that is it, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Moreno?
I have no report.
Very good. Madam Clerk?
Nothing.
No report there?
Oh, I do have something.
Okay.
Everyone should have their...
Here, turn on your mic there.
Everyone should have their new updated committee assignments and board meeting schedules tucked underneath there, if you haven't found them.
He's looking for his.
Yeah, I'll, I'll find it later.
Okay.
We'll find it. That's it?
Yes.
Okay. Very, very good. Motion to adjourn, anyone?
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Kim, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Very good. We're adjourned.